Good evening. Welcome to Barret County School Systems Work Session, the June 24th session. It is 6:00 PM and we will now call the meeting to order. Good to see you all here tonight. We'll begin with the Superintendent's Report.
Yes ma'am, thank you. I want to begin tonight by just acknowledging Ms. Kelly's absence. Ms. Kelly is not with us tonight because she is with a ill family member. So I know you guys will join me in keeping her in your thoughts and prayers as we pray for her and her family during this time. Also, I just wanted to start by saying thank you to all of our school leaders and coaches and teachers this summer. I know everybody thinks we close this time of year, but our campuses have been very active with practices and summer school. We have several summer camps going on for students across our high schools where we've served 175 students and counting, I believe. So just want to say how grateful I am as a superintendent to all of our staff who continue to serve our kids, even in the summer days, so they don't have to miss them too much for these couple of months that we're off. So thank you all, and that concludes the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Dr. Laduff. We'll go ahead with our presentations and discussions, support services. I believe Dr. Low has one action item for us.
Great. Good evening. I do have one item for consideration of being added to the consent agenda for the July 8th Board Meeting, and it is the renewal of the Advantage Behavioral Health Contract to fund two student mental health clinicians for the 2025-2026 school year. I do want to give you all an update on the progress of filling these positions. The first clinician started in mid-March, and she did an incredible job of just diving right in, connecting with the faculty, building rapport with the students, and building her caseload. I think she's even meeting with some of the students on her caseload over the summer. The second clinician will be starting with us during pre-planning at the end of July. He's coming to us from Augusta, Georgia. He's very talented and we're really excited to have him onboard with us for our students. So funding for these positions is through the AEAP Grant that Ms. Zimmer, the Recovery Coordinator at Appalachian High School, has been working on for the past several months. As a reminder, AEAP is the Anti-Terrorism and Emergency Assistance Program. So the Superintendent is recommending the contract renewal with Advantage Behavioral Health Systems as presented with a maximum price of $170,000. Questions for me? Yes ma'am.
That does not cover testing or anything like that, right? That's an addition, that's an extra cost? That's what I was reading through, I was just curious.
Psychological testing? No ma'am, it's just to do therapy with students.
Okay.
Could I have a motion to approve, to move this to our consent agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to approve it, to move it to consent agenda.
Raise your hand if you agree.
All in favor.
Sorry, darling. Thank you.
All right, and Ms. Houston, Business Services.
Good evening. The Superintendent recommends approving the fiscal year 2026 general fund budget in the amount of $226,296,37. And the fiscal year 2026 other funds, which includes our special revenue funds in the amount of $26,610,167. The capital projects funds, $51,433,673. And the debt service fund of $12,992,379, which amounts to $91,036,219 for those three different categories of funds. The Barret County School System has advertised and conducted two public hearings on the fiscal year 2026 budget. One citizen attended and had no public comment. The unassigned fund balance of $12,915,925 will be used in lieu of adding the millage rate to cover these expenditures. This year, our state mandated benefits increased by approximately $5.3 million. However, our staff, our Superintendent and Board of Education were able to cut expenditures and even added a $1,000 one-time supplement or retention appreciation bonus for next year's employees. And the budget increased, I don't want to say only because it's still a big amount, but by $4.9 million. And the budgets are attached for your approval. This must be voted on tonight prior to June 30th to avoid a spending resolution.
Ms. Houston, I just wanted to say I appreciate your time and dedication in working through all those budget items. And Madam Chair, I'd make a motion to approve the budget.
Motion for Mr. Callaway, do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Hendricks? All in favor? Motion hears. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and do the action item for the July 8th meeting. So the Superintendent recommends setting a millage rate for fiscal year 2026. The Barret County School System has advertised and will conduct three public hearings for a 15.695 millage rate. So far, after two meetings, we have had one citizen attend with no public comment. We will conduct our final millage public hearing on Monday, June 30th at 1:00 PM. The budget includes property tax revenue calc- the budget, which we just approved, included a property tax revenue calculated at 15.5 mils and uses fund balance of 12.9 million, saving taxpayers 2.89 mils on their property tax bills. The Barret County Commissioners are currently voting on a budget that includes charging the school system for additional cost of SROs. If those expenditures are passed along to the school district, a millage rate of 15.695 would cover these additional expenses. The millage rate should be set at 15.695 or lower to avoid having to conduct the advertisements and the public hearings all over again.
Ms. Houston, I have a couple of questions, and I would like to preface it with this. This is my first time going through the school budget, so my arms are a little sweaty right now, okay? So a couple of questions for you. So just because I know we'd mentioned at a prior meeting regarding, and I believe Mr. Callaway had made that discussion, for going into our fund balance for that additional amount, correct? For the SROs if we do not receive that funding, you know, from the county.
That's correct.
So just to make sure I understand, are there any other ways or financial mechanisms that we could cover that without going into fund balance?
To cover additional expenditures without going into fund balance, the really only way we can do it is increase the millage rate, which just said that might not happen, go into fund balance, which just said you don't want to do. So we either cut services or we have to cut personnel cost.
Okay, now if, and so I'm assuming because we've all been through, and as Mr. Callaway said, the budget season, so we've all looked at, and we know that there's been several services cut with what's been presented. So maybe this, and so you mentioned personnel, and so maybe this question's a little bit more in line with Dr. Kurtz. But if I may ask, have, could we review the currently posted unfilled positions on our website? Could we review those and see if there's any that we might be able to freeze?
Yeah, absolutely. We do have a number of positions that are still unfilled, and principals and other leaders are filling and hiring as we speak. We can certainly look at holding those and put together a plan on how we might redistribute staff to cover in areas of need. We could put something together prior to your next budget or your next millage rate.
That would be great. So we'd have the total number of personnel that you've identified, or positions rather, as well as the dollar amount?
Yes, we could put all of those things together as a plan.
Is that all right, Dr. Laduff?
Yes ma'am.
All right. I just think it's important, if there's other ways to fund without going into fund balance, that we need to look at that, because that makes us financially responsible. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Since this is a reoccurring cost, that's a very good way to look at it. Thank you.
Okay, no, I appreciate that. So I look forward to seeing those results. Thank you.
I would also like to take a moment and just say thank you to Dr. Laduff, Dr. Kurtz, and everyone who has already been strategic in not feeling, filling or freezing positions this past school year going into this budget before we were handed this unexpected expenditure of SROs.
Thank you.
Good evening. So the Superintendent recommends the approval of renewing the school nutrition contracts for food with Gold Star Foods, not to exceed $5,392,646. Our paper contract with Dade Imperial, not to exceed $428,000. Our milk contract with Pet Dairy, not to exceed $635,313. And our produce contract with Royal Food Produce, not to exceed $225,000 for the 25-26 academic school year. So these general terms and conditions associated with the original IFB for each vendor outline the contract extension terms. So each contract may be renewed for up to four one-year terms, provided mutual agreement with both parties. And this will be the third one-year renewal for our food with Gold Star, the second one-year renewal for paper with Dade, and the second one-year renewal for produce with Royal, and our second one-year renewal for our milk with Pet Dairy. Is there any questions?
Anyone? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Everyone good with moving, moving these two action items to consent agenda? Thank you.
Next, Ms. Perna.
Okay.
Let's just repeat.
Okay, okay. All right, Mr. Perna with System Operations.
Good evening. I'd like to give you an update on our classroom pod installation at Wyandotte Barrow High School, and also the greenhouses at Wyandotte Barrow High School in Appalachia. And so we're making good progress out there. Rain has got us a good, a good bit here lately, but we're coming out of that, it looks like. And so the pod itself is, is moving right along. We've got the floor finish going down in the classrooms. We expect to begin moving furniture in there. Yeah, that's not it.
That's a lot of rain.
Yeah. The floor finish is going down in the classroom, so we look to begin putting furniture in place next week. The greenhouse, the picture that you'll, you'll see in a moment is just of a concrete pad at Wyandotte Barrow, but that was taken last week. So if you drive by now, you'll see a greenhouse there. Now that concrete pad picture, you could take that to Appalachia, and that's what theirs looks like right now. So that crew that has been at Winder will transition over to Appalachia to begin putting their greenhouse together. And once we get those in place, then we'll get the utilities, power and water out, out to those greenhouses. So those are the, sort of the main, there you go. So there's that pad right there. It's got a greenhouse on it now. That's good, yeah. There it is. There's the, the classrooms inside. They don't have floor finish in those pictures, but they do now. And, there you go. Thank you. I don't have photos of these. Again, a lot has happened in an eight-day period here, but at C-FIT, I will tell you that the vestibule wall that was in place before is gone. Framing and insulation and sheet rock is in place now for the new opening. The wall to separate one larger classroom into two, the same thing. The metal stud and insulation and sheet rock is in place, and they're finishing those walls. And floor protection is down in the gym. They'll begin painting in there here in the next few days. So again, feel like we're making good progress on all those fronts. Are there any questions about any of those, any of those things, what we have coming up?
No. I'd like to say thank you for working so diligently this summer to get these projects finished.
Thank you. Thank you. Team effort. Everybody's working hard. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perna. All right. Dr. Mo, Teaching and Learning.
Good evening. Thank you. As Dr. Laduff mentioned, there is work that continues during the summer while most families are enjoying vacation. Our students and our staff are having a great time at the beach and with family over the summer. There is a great amount of work that continues in the school system. So we do have principals and central office staff who continue to work to plan for the opening of school for the following school year. So I would like to give you an overview of some of that work that continues to prepare for the opening of the 25-26 school year. And you can see on the screen that school does officially open on August 20, I'm sorry, on August 1st, 2025. So we will officially welcome students back. And on the next slide, there is an overview of our Leadership Summit. This is one of the events that occurs over the summer for professional learning and support for our leaders across the district, including executive cabinet, directors, coordinators, principals, assistant principals, and instructional coaches. That event will take place on July 21st at BASSA. And on the right-hand side of the screen, you can see that we have a theme and some focus areas for the Leadership Summit, Leadership with Purpose, Instruction with Impact, and Safety at the Core. And then our focus areas are Aligning Every Decision with Student Success, Keeping Student Learning and Safety at the Center of All Leadership Actions. We do have some keynote speakers that you see on the screen there. This will be our inaugural event for the Exchange of the Role of District Teacher of the Year. So Mrs. Brooke Bradberry, our 2024 District Teacher of the Year, will officially pass the role to our 2025 District Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Caroline Bucky. And then we will welcome Dr. April Aldrich with DOE back to the school system. Winder is her home, so she'll be coming home to speak to our leaders. And then we'll have Mrs. Amy Denty as a presenter as well. So that's one of the events. And then on the next slide, our New Teacher Orientation, one of the key events for our district, we will welcome new teachers on July 22nd. And you can see on the screen that we have secondary teachers in the morning, and then we'll flip the schedule, and then elementary teachers will join us in the afternoon. And this is a huge effort by HR, so we're thankful to that team for their work. On the next slide, on July 23rd, there will be system-wide professional learning, and that is just a screenshot of all of the events that are planned. There's much more than what you see on the screen, but that's just a screenshot to share that across content areas, across different portions of the school system, there is professional learning. So part of the work that takes dur-, that takes place during the summer is that continuous learning and preparing our teachers and leaders for the opening of the new school year. On the next slide, there is also a community event that is being advertised, and we want everybody to be aware of this one and bring friends to this event, because our students have an opportunity, as you can see with the bulleted items on the screen, there will be many benefits for students as well as families. That includes free backpacks, and it ranges from free haircuts to shoes, distribution of some medical services, school nutrition will have free and reduced application assistance. There will be transportation information available. So we want everybody to be aware of that event. It is a community event, and so many resources will be available to families. So please make sure that you share that and bring friends and family to that event to support our students. Our open house to welcome students and families to meet teachers and to get that back to school, that great feeling that we have with this opening of school. Open House for Elementary will be July 30th, and then Middle and High Schools will be July 29th and 30th. And this information will be on the school system website and updated as well. So we look forward to welcoming students and families to our open house event to meet teachers. Those are the events that we have been planning so far. There's much more work that could not be captured in just a few slides, of course, across the school system. But we did want to give you an overview of events that have been planned and will be taking place and available to students and families. We are excited about the new school year, and I want to extend gratitude to our team who has been working diligently not only to get school buildings ready, but to staff the buildings and all of that critical work that takes place in opening a new school year. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Mo. All right, moving on to Dr. Kurtz, Human Resources.
All right. Thank you very much for having me this evening, and I am here to tell you it's an exciting time in human resources, but it's almost always an exciting time in human resources. As Ms. Houston and Dr. Carey and others alluded to, we're lining up for the next year. You know, we're lining up our financial as well as our human resources. And, and part of that is not just the resources, but what strategies do we need in place to support all these folks? So we are going to take a little bit of your time this evening in revising or recommending three different action items to be placed on the consent agenda. I will go through each of these and give some time for questions, and hopefully these things line us up for a successful start to a new year where we're making a great difference for our kiddos. The first is Personnel Policy Updates. We have a dozen that we're updating and one that we're recommending that we rescind. I'll give a quick overview of each of these, but if you have questions along the way, because there's quite a bit, please don't be shy. Policy GAD, Professional Learning Opportunities. There's a minor change in this one. It refers to a professional learning coordinator, and we don't have a specific coordinator position. We just changed some language there to allow flexibility, so those duties could be assigned to anybody the superintendent sees fit to assign those duties to. GAE, Complaints and Grievances. This policy also has a very minor change. It allows the superintendent to designate somebody to hear a complaint and grievance on his behalf. We're a large enough district now that that's not a realistic expectation for those things to always be at the superintendent's desk. GAM, Drug-Free Workplace. There are a number of changes in here, mostly designed to better articulate expectations around alcohol use and possession on campus. These are all personnel policies, so this wouldn't be for students, this would be for staff. And add a couple of pieces of information regarding the safekeeping of both over-the-prescription, over-the-counter and prescription medications, as well as clarifying some expectations for self-reporting when staff are involved in an arrest or drug-related conviction, making sure that those things are coming to us so we can address those. GAMB, Possessions of Weapons by Employees. There's a change in this policy that will require drug and alcohol testing, or random drug and alcohol testing for those that are permitted to carry weapons as a part of their duties on our campus. This is a pretty standard practice. It's a best practice in public safety, and we just wanted to make sure our policy's lined up with those in law enforcement and elsewhere. GAN, Employee Tobacco Use. This just better includes all district properties, including vehicles and some property- and some properties were not clearly articulated in there. Also, there was a little bit of language in there that referred to students, and that was removed because that should be better captured in our J policies, and I believe already is. GANA, Infectious Disease, was very time-specific and very focused on one point in time around COVID. And so we are making some adjustments to make that policy more general and applicable. And we are removing any reference to a regulation. That regulation itself was very specific to one period in time, and they've recommended protocols at that time for COVID. GARH, Employee Leaves and Absences. There are a number of changes here. The first one, make sure that we are transferring 45 days for all TRS-eligible employees if they come from another district. Right now, we already do that, but we just didn't capture it in policy. The policy only indicated bus drivers and teachers, but we would also do it for clerical and other staff members that may have received sick leave days in another school district. It's a pretty standard practice in the region. Others are doing it. Just wanted our policy to line up with our practice. We are also making a change regarding court, court leave to make sure that it's very clear if it's work-related, there is relief provided outside of sick leave. But if it's not work-related, then it would not be provided by the district. We did also adjust paid parental leave. The state law requires that we have a minimum time less than eight hours. We had it down to one hour, and that gets a little bit cumbersome to manage and figure out when somebody comes in and teaches for one hour. And so we changed that minimum to four hours, or we recommend changing that minimum to four hours. And then the last one is we had to add a significant section at the bottom there around providing leave that would not be a part of, not come from sick leave, around bone marrow transplants or organ transplants. And this is to be in alignment with the newly passed legislation, House Bill 235. Questions about any of that? All right, going fast here, but slow me down if you need me to. GARK, Employee Vacation. There's a slight change here. We had some blackout periods the week before and after the beginning and end dates of school. And there are other times that we may need people to not be on vacation. There may be some very critical times, say, transportation. May want to make sure all their people are here when we're doing our safety drills and safety inspections. At the same time, it may be a great time to give a transportation supervisor the week off for vacation after school lets out. That might be the best time to get them rested, relaxed, ready to get started for the next school year. So we've changed the language there to remove the sort of hard blackout dates and left it to each department where it is defined as the days that are critical for school or departmental operations could be withheld or denied vacationally for those dates. And it may be different for each school or department depending on what's going on. The, on a related note, Personal Leave, which is not codified in policy, did have some similar language around blackout dates in our handbook, and we'll adjust that similarly to give our leaders and principals the flexibility to provide, you know, for full staffing on dates that they deem as critical to operations of their school. Policy GBC, Professional Personnel Recruitment, was modified so that internal transfers can take place more efficiently. Internal transfers before, between schools that occur between a board meeting can take place now and will come to the board at the next meeting as an information item as part of the board report. The GBIA, Teacher Evaluation Appeals, just a quick wording change there. Refer to the Department of Planning and Personnel, which is now the Department of Human Resources. So we've changed that language. GBN, Professional Personnel Termination. This policy required a regulation, and that regulation outlined the processes, the due process provided for folks that are being terminated, where their contract's being terminated. We're just going to remove that regulation and outline our processes within the staff handbook so that that's more easily available for all staff. GVRC, Professional Personnel Workloads. It has a reference in the very first line, about an eight-hour workday. And then in the second line, it talks about a seven, I think it's the second or third line, talks about a seven-and-a-half-hour workday or a seven-and-a-half-hour schedule. We removed that line. I'm not sure quite why that was in there, and it seems to conflict with the eight-hour workday requirement in the first line. Policy GCK, Classified Personnel Suspension. There's some slight changes here to allow the superintendent more flexibility in suspending, terminating, or otherwise disciplining classified staff in between board meetings and bringing those to board meetings as information items at the next board meeting. And then GBAB, Pay for Performance. We're going to recommend rescinding this policy altogether. It's a policy in reaction to a 1994 law that has not been funded in many years, and it just has outlined some processes through which schools determine if they were eligible for and receive these funds, how that they would be distributed. Any questions about the policy recommendations?
Can we go back to GBRC, the personal workload?
Yes, we sure can.
It was, it was the third from the end, I think. There we go.
Yeah. Yes.
So the line stricken doesn't conflict with the first sentence. It just means that seven-and-a-half hours have to be on-site.
Scheduled, and the first line talks about an eight-hour, a minimum workday of eight hours, right. And just to make sure that we're not providing any confusion, there may be an eight-hour schedule provided.
No, no, the third line means that they must be on duty at the school or job site for seven-and-a-half hours so they could work remote for half an hour.
I don't believe it talks about their actual location of their work.
It does. It says they, these schedules shall ensure that they remain on duty at their school.
At their school. And I think it is around the scheduling rather than the location is the understanding that we had with the attorneys, that they would build a seven-hour, seven-and-a-half-hour schedule, but they also can build an eight-hour schedule. And the minimum workday is set as eight hours at the beginning of the policy.
Okay, but if you take out that line, they don't have to be on-site to work?
I don't know that we have a policy that specifically outlines or requires them to be on-site in some.
That line that you're stricken in does.
We don't allow for remote work at this time, though.
I'm just saying, based on that line, you're allowing it. If you take out that line, you're allowing remote work.
I don't believe our legal counsel has read it that way. I certainly can take it back to them, and we can table this one if you'd rather that not be a part of the consent agenda.
I'm just saying, the way that policy reads. But.
It does set a minimum workday. It doesn't necessarily need to set a location or provide for a work location outside of home. I mean, outside of.
I'm saying the third line that we're taking out specifies that they must be on duty.
A schedule that puts them on duty seven-and-a-half hours a day while their workday is a minimum of eight hours.
Do you mind sharing the rationale behind why you're wanting to remove that line?
Well, to cut down on confusion, we're just trying to set them a minimum workday with that policy. And so if we're setting a minimum workday of eight hours to have a schedule that's only seven-and-a-half hours as a minimum requirement, can confuse staff in reading this, wondering what, what would be the point of the extra half hour? What, you know?
Well, that's maybe when they go home and grade papers. Or go home and check email.
Yeah. In our handbook, we also have that their workday will be an eight-hour workday. And that's a fairly standard practice so that we can supervise kids. So we don't currently allow for those. Now, there are for our FLSA-exempt employees, some duties that will take place, you know, outside of the eight-hour workday.
Not to get into the weeds, but could that 30 minutes have meant to be their lunch?
So there is a law around duty-free lunch for elementary. We examined that for elementary teachers. Of course, the charter waiver, we waived that. I believe our principals generally provide that, I think, with the exception of during COVID when we had supervision problems with folks there and needed to eat in classrooms and things. So folks generally provide that at the elementary level for teachers, but that's not for all staff. So it's not necessarily, it doesn't necessarily apply to all staff, the seven-and-a-half-hour rule in terms of if we were to look at it as a lunch break.
Madam Chair, I'd like to request that this policy be removed from the consent agenda so that we can continue this conversation. And Dr. Kurtz has time to get any and all clarification that's needed. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll gladly do that. Well, let me go ahead and make a recommendation that if there's no further discussion with the other policies, is there further discussion? Then Superintendent would like to recommend the following policies be placed on the consent agenda for revision. GAD, Professional Learning Opportunities. GAE, or excuse me, on the consent agenda to be placed on the table at the July 8th meeting for revision. GAD, Professional Learning Opportunities. GAE, Complaints and Grievances. GAM, Drug-Free Workplace. GAMB, Possession of Weapons by Employees. GAN, Employee Tobacco Use. GANA, Infectious Diseases. GARH, Employee Leaves and Absences. GARK, Employee Vacation. GBC, Professional Personnel Recruitment. GBIA, Teacher Evaluation Appeals. GBN, Professional Personnel Termination. GC, and GCK, Classified Personnel Suspension for Revision. And GBAB, Pay for Performance, to be rescinded.
Just one point of clarification, Board Members. The discussion referenced, these are minimums set in these policies. So a minimum of seven-and-a-half hours or a minimum of eight hours. One thing we're trying to do is give our leaders the flexibility to work with their staff. Sometimes there's instances, much like we experienced this year, where we have staff members who are on planning periods and things like that, where we can allow them some time to step away from time to time if they need to do these things. And they don't have to use, utilize leave for it and things like that. So part of the policy change suggestion was just to provide our leaders with that flexibility to kind of work with their staff and allow them to leave campus if they needed to, as long as it didn't affect student instruction. So, you know, obviously, our staff still reports to their supervisors, and we have policies and protocols in place where they're going to need to request that time from their supervisor and have it approved. So we're just trying to increase that flexibility.
And I appreciate the good questions. I'll get some more information and come back to you. So thank you for always asking.
And then I have a quick question on the GAM, Drug-Free Workplace. There's only reasonable suspension testing, right? There's no random drug testing in the, in the system?
No, there's not none. There's none in that policy. There's a requirement by federal law for, and a different G policy. I couldn't name it off the top of my head, for random drug testing for all of our CDL operators, for all of our bus drivers. And then the only other place would be what we are adding for our GAMB, Possession of Weapons by All Employees. But there is no random drug testing outside of those two policies that I'm aware of.
Dr. Kurtz, I'd just like to say, what a tremendous job. I'm so glad that you like to do policy review. Because it looks like you do.
We, we get some good input. When it doesn't work well, people speak up. We make a note, and we come back here in, in June to you guys. So thank you so much, and thank you for the good questions, because they do get complicated fast. We're trying to make them work for quite a variety of situations and trying to give us enough clarity to be able to do the right thing for our kids and enough flexibility to do the right things in the right way for everybody. So thank you so much. Any other questions about policy? All right. The second agenda item I'd like to ask to be placed on the consent agenda will be, at the July 8th meeting, will be around a compensation classification study. In the course of the year, we are able to examine our salaries against some of those across the state. And our goal is to make sure that they are both internally aligned and externally competitive. To improve our standing in this process, we've requested a, we put out an RFP for a compensation and classification study. There's really two parts to this. One is adjusting our salary schedules, but the other is the classification of employees. Do we have them in the right place on those salary schedules? And they're both very important pieces that we can't really fix one entirely without fixing the other. So we received seven, seven total proposals. One of the expectations in the request for proposals was that we had folks who had done at least three salary studies or compensation classification studies in public Georgia school districts, because the competition there, the market is different than, say, a market with other government agencies or what the market may be in Ohio or nationally. Only two of the seven companies had actually met that minimum requirement. Of those two companies, we have Ed Planners and MMG Solutions. We had a team come together and look at the four scoring categories. And in all, in three of the four scoring categories, in an overall, Ed Planners scored higher. We put a lot of emphasis on their references, their previous work in other districts, and sort of the enduring nature of their outcomes. In other words, do they endure over time? We really only invest this money, the last time we did this was in FY16. It's now FY26, so it's about 10 years, 10 to 15 years. If we can do this well, it really helps us be competitive across the board, recruit the best and retain the best. But based on their work samples, their work plan, the previous work and references, educational planners had the highest score and the most relevant work as they included something that some of the others didn't. And that is they will rewrite to make sure they get the classification component correctly, all non-teaching job descriptions as a part of this. So we'll walk out of here with a sort of a double set of work done there. And the work should be easily understood by all staff members so we can start to roll out a plan moving forward. Any questions about that before I ask for, yes?
I'm just curious about the, just the range and the cost. What is the average cost of this kind of a study?
So, so the Ed Planners is $125,000. We had allocated $80,000 in the budget, and we're hoping to be paying something like that. Some were cheaper. The, I did run the costs for those that did not meet our minimum qualifications. Some of them were higher than Ed Planners, as high as, I think, Ed Planners is all-inclusive at $125, but there was one here that's only $52,000, but for every job description rewritten, they charged another $550. We have a little over 100, around 120 jobs, non-teaching job descriptions, so that starts to get a good bit higher there. We had some as low as 58, and then the one that, the other one that met the minimum qualifications, MMG, was 45, and they were going to charge an additional 75 an hour. It wasn't particularly clear exactly when the 75-an-hour additional comes in there.
It's just such a, it's such a leap. I was just curious.
It is. And looking at the two, between these two in particular, it appears as though MMG, and MMG is the one who did our last salary study, so we've got some experience with that ourselves, focuses primarily on not the classification, but the compensation charts. And having those charts correct or having those competitive is not sufficient if we don't have the folks in the right place. So taking those 120-something job descriptions and making sure they're in the right place on those charts is more, is as important, if not more important, than just getting the charts themselves correct. And that's why the Ed Planner scored higher in every area except cost in all of their performance metrics. Thank you for the question, though. Other questions about that?
Those were excellent answers, by the way.
Well, and we had a team, and folks agonized over it. I promise you, I agonized over it. You know, the financial cost is one thing, and then also, you know, it's going to take a lot of staff energy to do this, and we want to get it right.
It's important for the public to know that there's a lot of hidden costs in some of those little bits.
We do want to get this right, and so if our staff's going to invest the energy, we want our outcomes to have the highest degree of confidence that they are going to carry us well into the future in being as competitive as we want to be and being internally equitable as we want to be. And I know that's one of the goals of this board, is making sure that we're competitive, and this is going to give us some, some better numbers there.
Dr. Kurtz, just a couple of questions. So what is the time and duration of the study, and when, when is the plan to initiate it?
So both of these studies have approved, you know, both of these had a timeline that was ending sometime around December, January, is their estimates. And those that did not meet minimum qualifications generally would end up around there as well. So folks are generally thinking of these as about six-month studies.
Okay. And so in our prior use, I think you said 26ting with MMG Solutions, they just focus on compensation and not the JDs, the job descriptions, correct?
It does not appear as though that that's what happened. Some of the issues we have right now, as we look, going to get in the weeds here, but I get excited about this stuff. When we look, we are, across the state, we participate in a, in a small study each year. And it takes our non-teaching positions, and there's quite a few of those, whether it's in maintenance or a principal, you know, they're all over the place. And it only compares the highest salary. And our highest salaries, we actually compare very favorably on those. But when people come to work for us, the way we place people on those is such that we end up with a lot of folks saying no thank you and turning us down at a higher rate because of the pieces that came out of this and the training for us on how we apply those. And so while our theoretical top end is very favorable, and if I just look at the one study, and I walked in looking at that, I was like, wow. and I walked in looking at that, I was like, wow, we're, we're doing fairly well. And then as I started working through the various principals or departments trying to hire folks, and we would actually place them on some things that are, have probably larger ranges than they should have too. Should, in the industry, you should have about a 40 to 50% salary range, and some of them are over 100% salary range. So it's a little harder when people are applying to know where they might end up. But our actual salaries end up being, in a number of positions, not all, but a number of our key positions, a good bit lower than our competitors, even though we, on a study, compare more favorably, because the studies weren't that complete.
No, I certainly appreciate it. Been done, been part of salary studies before, so I can certainly appreciate the compensation, but also the job description portion. That gets quite tedious, but it is just as important as the compensation. So I appreciate that, you know, ED or Ed Planners does all of the above.
Yeah, we're, we're very excited to work with them, and they come highly recommended, incredibly highly recommended, from those in education. Other questions, thoughts? Thank you for the great questions. At this time, I'd like to ask the, well, the superintendent recommends awarding the contract for classification and compensation study to educational planners of Marietta, Georgia, in the amount of $125,000. Additionally, the superintendent recommends amending the general fund budget to allow an additional $45,000 from the fund balance to be allocated for this study, as originally we, in the budget we just adopted, we had only allocated $80,000 for this estimate. Like to ask that that be placed on the consent agenda for July 8th.
We'll go ahead with one more item, and then we'll, we'll move them all at one time.
Okay, sounds good, okay. The last item I have is our ESS Southeast LLC contract. This is the company that provides us with our substitute teachers. This will be the fifth year of a contract that we are allowed to renew for five years. So this will be the last year before we start to reexamine this more thoroughly. We do review this each year. That partnership with them began in 2020, 2021 and 2022 school year. We have made a number of adjustments through the years. The, the overall cost that they, they bill us for, for their services has remained the same, but our expenses have gone up as the need for leave has gone up considerably since we originally started with them. The state passed a paid parental leave law that provided additional 120 hours of leave for new parents. Last year, one of my first meetings here, we doubled that to be in compliance with the new, new state parent parental leave law, and, but they doubled that to 240 hours. Of course, this year, the state's added leave for things like organ and bone marrow transplants. I'm not sure if that'll be a high-use piece or not, but absent staff, staff absences have increased over time as sort of our, our total staffing costs have increased over time. So we are expecting that to cost $2,200,000. Any questions about that before I ask for that to be placed on the consent agenda? All right. At this time, based on performance, cost, and review of alternatives, superintendent recommends adding renewal of the ESS Southeast LLC contract and associated addenda with an estimated cost of $2,800,000 be placed on the consent agenda for approval at the July 8th board meeting.
Everyone good, moving all three of these items to the consent agenda?
Yeah.
Agreed.
Thank you so much.
Madam Chair, if I may, I just want to, on behalf of our staff, thank the board for a couple of things. Number one, the $1,000 for all staff that is returning to us this year. I know several of us in this room have been stopped by our staff to let us know how grateful they are for the acknowledgement of the hard work that they do for kids every day. And just want to remind everybody that that was a gap we had in our budget that the work of our board highlighted and brought that forward. Also, I want to thank you for the continued work of the salary study and what that will do for our school system as we continue to try to recruit and retain the, the best people to put in front of our children. You all will recall, you recently developed your beliefs as a Board of Education, one of which included making sure we took great care of, of the people that we put in front of our children, whether that be flexibility or salaries or what have you. And I can tell you, as a system of employees, myself being one of them, we are grateful that you all are living those beliefs in your actions. So just wanted to say thank you for that.
Thank you, Dr. Leder. All right, moving on to Dr. Thompson with Strategic Information Services.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to be with you as always. This evening, we have two items of information and four action items. In the interest of time, I'm not going to dig deep into the communications report. You can review that, it's posted for you. You'll find a lot of great photos of end-of-the-year graduations, the engagement that our communications team has been doing on that, but you can read that, get that every month. What I will point you to is the second information item. One of the things we're really trying to focus on as we ramp down this year and prepare for next year, next year is going to be a really important year for the Barrow County school system. We'll be writing a new strategic plan, we'll be charting a new path for the next five years. And one of the things that we know we have a great need to do is to refocus on measurable, achievable outcomes and goals. We don't really have enough of that in our current plan. And so one of the things we're going to be doing over the next few months, both in board meetings, but also in some board retreats with the board, is we're going to be talking to you guys a lot about our data, what it means, answering your questions, and helping that when we get to the point where as a community, we need to craft measurable outcome goals that everyone's comfortable where we're at and what the needs assessment says are the most important areas. So, um, tonight, what I'm going to do is I'm going to talk a little bit about our attendance and enrollment trends from 24-25. The state meets the embargo that we expect they will. At our next meeting, we'll be sharing milestones results with you for the end of the year, achievement results. Obviously, graduation rate will follow shortly after that and several other things. But this seemed like a good place to start, so tonight, we're going to be focusing on those. So attendance, if you go to the next slide, there we go. A lot of the laws on the books around attendance and truancy come from a period in Georgia where most systems employed truancy officers, and the laws never really changed. So as an example, under state board rule, the definition of truancy is any child subject to compulsory attendance who misses five days or more unexcused in a year. The last time I saw that number ran for the entire state of Georgia, that was well north of 50% of the students in the state of Georgia met the criterion as truant. So it becomes a sort of functionally difficult definition, because state law also requires that when a student meets certain absence thresholds, we have to send letters home to the parents, warning them of the various consequences under the law. That sometimes gets back to board members, it certainly gets back to principals. There's a lot in state law about truancy and attendance that is very old and is very unwieldy. One of the things that's currently happening at the legislative level is there's a lot of interest in revisiting attendance laws. Senate Bill 123 passed this last round, there's several study committees happening over the summer. I think the expectation is the legislature's going to make a major change to some of our attendance laws potentially going forward. Because attendance, as you'll see in the data, post-COVID has been a problem statewide and in Barrow as well. One of the changes SB 123 made was it took a metric we had been using for a lot, a long time, and it codified it into state law to define chronically absent, which means basically a student who has missed at least 10% of their enrolled days. If you think about it this way, you have a student who's enrolled the entire year, we have 176 instructional days, that means they have to miss at least 18 days to be chronically truant. But you may have a kid who's only enrolled 50 days with us. If they miss five days, they're also chronically truant, because they were not enrolled the same amount of time. So this is an old measure, but it is now being written into state law in a way that is much more useful, and I, we expect that to be actually incorporated into a lot of areas. Let's go to the next slide. One way we look at attendance is just on a given day, how many kids are in school? This is broken out by level. You can see on a typical day at elementary, about 94% of our students are in attendance. Middle tends to be comparable, but a little bit behind that. And then high school's going to generally be a little bit lower. I will say that number this year is lower than it's been in years past due to Appalachia having more of an impact from September 4th, but generally speaking, high school lags that a little bit. But that doesn't tell us a lot about the chronically truant kids. So this is where we actually see what I think are the really concerning numbers. So this is Barrow County, this is not the state of Georgia, this is Barrow County, and what you can see is, in the three, two years prior to 2020, typically, there were around 16% of students in Barrow County schools, regardless of level, who would have been classified as chronically truant. That number was lower in 2020 because the school year ended earlier, so that's a bit artificial, that's not a real number. What you can then see happened is, post-COVID, we just had an insane increase in the number of students chronically truant, where 2021, 44% of our students were chronically truant, 41%. Thankfully, that number has continued to decline, which is due in large part to the work of our staff, to the work of our school-level leaders, our social workers, our counselors, all those folks who are doing that work to try to get students in school every day. But that number is still considerably higher than it was pre-COVID, and that creates a problem for us. This is last year, this is this year's data, 24-25, broken out by level using that number. And what you can see, elementary and middle, about one out of every five kids is chronically truant. That number jumps up to about three out of every 10 kids at the high school level, which that's a pattern you'll see pretty much in every district that looks at attendance data. So the next thing you have is the chronically truant, absent students compared to the state of Georgia. Now, we don't have SY25 for Georgia, so I did not include that in there, so this ends last year. But what you can see is, prior to COVID, Barrow had a little higher rate of chronic absenteeism than did the state as a whole. You can see, post-COVID, that number spiked incredibly. The state did jump up into the low 20%, but we were, again, four out of every 10 of our students missing at least 10% of enrolled days. Thankfully, that gap has closed, but as you can see, there's still some work to do to close that entirely. This is the baseline, and by the way, I apologize, I was updating some of the data. I originally did not have the data point for chronically absent for system level. I was able to get it after we had published, but I forgot to change the title, so that says greater than 15. This is the exact same metric. This is percentage of students chronically absent, 10% or greater, so I apologize for that. But what you can see is, as we compare ourselves to our neighbors and those districts around us, we have one of the higher rates in the, the region in that area. And this has real consequences. So this is embargoed data, so I can't show you the summary, but this is from 24-25. And what this shows you is categories of student absentee rates. So that top line is less than 5%. That essentially means students who miss less than 5% of enrolled days, 5 to 10, 10 to 20, greater than 20. And what you're looking at is their milestones results for the end, of course, at the high school level. So what that means is, for students that miss less than 5% of enrolled days, half of them were proficient or higher, which is our ultimate goal. But if you drop down to students that missed at least a fifth of their enrolled days, that number drops precipitously, and that's a pattern we're going to see when we look at the end of EOG, the next slide, at the middle and elementary level. And again, you can see a clear pattern where students who miss more days perform more poorly academically. And that's, again, there's a little bit of a chicken and the egg problem. Sometimes students that are struggling academically are less inclined to want to come to school. It's not entirely clear, it's a one-way linear relationship, but at the end of the day, we know students being in school, being exposed to high-quality instruction from a quality teacher is what moves the needle on learning. So the more our students are absent, the more that's problematic for us. So the last thing is the demographics of those. So this is comparing students in 24-25 that were chronically truant versus those that were not. And what you'll see is, there really is not a gigantic difference in terms of race and ethnicity, very, very similar. The areas where we see some differences, slight difference in special education, special education students a little more likely to be chronically truant, not gigantic, and then a very, very large on economically disadvantaged are students that qualify for free-introduced lunch. And anyone who's worked in these settings knows poverty is a gigantic predictor of truancy, and it's one of the challenges we have to overcome in meeting parents, meeting parents where they're at to try to get their students in school. So we continue to work this problem. I mean, we have to have students in school for our teachers to do the work they need to do to get students on grade level and above and exceeding that. It is a challenge, because a lot of things are out of our hands. We have an attendance protocol that our staff work really, really hard to put together. There are defined things that have to happen when a student misses 10, 10 unexcused absences. They get referred to community-based risk reduction, they work with DJJ, DFAX, court system, all kind of other things. But a lot of stuff has to happen before charges may get pressed or something else has to happen. And so in our particular instance, we're hoping the legislature will open up the toolbox a little bit more for us when we work with these kind of families through this, but do it in a way that doesn't necessarily punish parents who are just struggling and need support and services, not the judicial system, but some of them do. And so we hope that we get that a little bit better. But that's a major challenge for us in every district in the state, is getting attendance back on track post-COVID. I'll be happy to answer any questions on attendance before I move on to enrollment trends.
Madam Chair, I'd like to ask a few questions. Dr. Thompson, so on this, is there, so I know that there's state law regarding this, obviously, right now.
Yes, sir.
What if any, have you seen other systems do, or have we looked into other systems that have a much lower truancy rate? That'd be my first question.
There's a lot of different ways districts have approached this. Some of them have looked at doing local legislation through their magistrate judge or things of that nature to increase the penalties for parents beyond what's in state law. That's a heavy lift, because you have to get a lot of government agencies involved in that, but some districts have done it. A lot of them take the focus on engaging students, that the idea being, the more you make your work engaging, the more kids want to be there. The more school is a place the kids want to be, the less likely they're going to be to be grousing to their parents about having to go, and the parent just says, well, you can stay home today. So that's the second approach you kind of see, is what they approach on the engagement piece. There's other pieces that focus on refining the attendance protocol. So for example, our schools typically, and a lot of schools do this now, have parent notifications that let a parent know when their kid is absent from school, particularly with older kids. Parent may have left to go to work, kid's home alone, just didn't get on the bus. That helps the parent know something's happening of that nature. It's like anything else, every community is a little bit different, but we always, when we look at schools and school systems that have had success moving the needle on attendance, we learn something. And then we can take things that will work in our particular environment. But it's a constellation of approaches, there's not really any one thing that automatically moves the lever.
Okay, thank you. And then the second question is, is, on your slide, you were, you were showing that we have approximately 29% of our high school students fall into that chronically truant area, and then 30%.
Chronic absent, yes.
Yeah, chronically absent. And then 30% of those numbers are at the proficient or higher level. And I'm just wondering, is, is there really a true effect if our graduation rate's at 92% or 90, in the upper, above the state level? So our truancy rate or chronically absent rate was higher than the state level, but so is our graduation rate. So is there any true correlation there?
It's an extremely good question, Mr. Callow. And I can say I've been in education for a minute, and this is an old conversation about mastery learning versus performance learning in a setting. And there's arguments about, you know, are you preparing kids for the workplace if you just allow them not to come to school? There are certainly kids who are capable of missing a lot of school and still be effective. There are kids who can't. There are degrees where like, maybe five absences is not a huge problem, but 10 is. A lot of it depends on the nature of what's being taught, subjects vary a little bit. It's a topic for a good dissertation, but not one that I think I can answer tonight. But it's, it's, those are old conversations in education that have been going on as long as I've been in.
Hundred percent.
And there's not, no easy answers on those.
So at the, at the end of this, can, can, is there any way that you can have your team or yourself look into some of, if there are any policies in other communities and other counties around us that we can just take a look at?
Sure.
Just for our situational awareness of what other communities are doing to solve this problem.
I'll be happy to do that, sir.
Thank you so much, Dr. Thompson.
It's private.
I was just curious about, have you guys looked into some of the reasons and, from the children's side or the parent's side, why the children aren't coming? Is it just they don't want to go? Are they, are some of them sick? Are some of them bullied?
It's going to be all over the map. Like, there's not going to be any through line. I mean, it's going to be everything from kids who legitimately have large-scale medical issues and really just, we have to be a little more patient, we excuse their absences, but they miss a lot of days, all the way up to parents that have drug issues that just can't get them to school and everything in between. It's, and this would be something that I think as we go through our strategic planning, we might want to do a more of a deep dive into our current data. But again, I've, I've been dealing with attendance issues in various roles for 15, 20 years, and it's never just one thing, but there's always patterns. And so that's something we can certainly work to pull out as we go through a planning process in 25-26.
I was curious.
It's a good question.
And are, are you able to see the, I mean, your, sorry. So, so you can see the days that they miss. Is it a pretty high level for the half-days, the days that are right before breaks?
Yeah, this particular measure is using, is using partial days, I believe.
I have to verify that's the case, but like, so if a kid misses a certain portions of a day, it'll equal up eventually to a full day missed. There's, you can actually unpack that a couple of different ways. You can do this whole days missed versus combined total missed. I'd have to look up which one this specifically is, but yeah. Tardiness is a major problem in a lot of our schools.
Like at, like finals, there's some kids that exempt out of finals, so they don't have to come to school, so that's five days right there, right?
Well, and just in my experience, attendance has more imprecision in its measurement because you're depending on teachers to accurately take roll every day, and most of them do, but sometimes they don't. And so, we run into issues with that, where sometimes we're trying to make sure the data are accurate. But when we're talking this many students at large scale, we can definitely see the trends, those kind of things wash out generally.
Sure. I'd like to say, I really appreciate this data, and I'll look forward to learning what we can do to help.
Yes, ma'am. So, moving on to the second trend, we want to look at enrollment trends briefly. This has been, you know, we, if you go to the next slide, Megan, we have, you know, we've talked about this with the board before. We've gone through periods in Barrow of rapid growth and then plateauing in this particular case, and that's largely based on the economic market and housing, and just our houses selling, people moving in. So, we thought this evening, we would take a little time to look at that and unpack a few things on that. You can see on this particular trend, from about 2021 post-COVID until 2024, we were adding between 3, 5, 600 students a year, which is a pretty considerable clip when you're trying to manage that level of growth. Based on housing analysis we'd done, because we can pretty fine-grain say, if you build this many houses and you sell them, this is how many students it will yield. We had projected a large increase this year that never materialized, and so, we had to spend a little bit of time exploring what was going on with that. So, I'm going to get to that piece in a second, but what I wanted to start with is something that I think is a little less understood, which is how much flux we have during a school year and how that impacts teachers, schools, in terms of just students in and out. So, each month, Jenny gets up and talks about your different points. So, 100th day enrollment, 120th day. This is that data for this current year, and you can see how much that varies throughout the year. We had a low around 15, 360 on the 40th day, a high of 14, 15, 475 on the 20th. Over the course of the year, we averaged around 15,400 students, but over the course of the entire year, there were a total of 16,559 schools, students, that at one point or another were enrolled in Barrow County schools. And what that does, that creates a significant level of flux for schools to deal with in terms of acclimating to new students that are transferring in, transferring new students that are going out, making sure all that gets done. So, that can create a lot of challenges. If you go to the next slide, this is data that I pulled on churn rate for BCSS schools in '25. So, basically, what this looks at is, the beginning number is what their enrollment was at the day 11, when we finally have firm numbers. This is where they were. And what you can then see is how many withdrawals and additions they had throughout the year since that point. And what you can see is, there are schools, County Line would be an example, that had 22% churn between those initial students. The low would be BAC at around 4%. It's a choice school, that's not unexpected. But you can see, schools vary a lot, and I think people, the public, underestimates how much this puts strain on teachers when you're constantly having to add new students into your classroom, assess where they're at, try to go back and incorporate them in there. So, it's worth reflecting on, not just how many students we have, but how many students we totally get during the year, because that churn in and out creates major challenges for our folks as they go through. When we unpack why we didn't see the growth, you know, we can look at that from a lot of different ways, but the primary one is, we'll get to that in a second, but you can see withdrawals out. We did have an increase in the number of students leaving us to go homeschool after the year started. That's likely a September 4th effect in that, but you can generally see the other ones were either down or were generally stable. The two biggest changes we saw in terms of students coming into us from enrollment is, we had a decline in students enrolling from another country, but the bigger one is, we had a major decline in students transferring from other public schools, which, that's typically the tip-off that you're simply not getting new students from other parts of the state or the country. So, if you go to the next slide, we think this is tied largely to, you can build houses all day long, but you have to sell them. And one of the things that's happened in the last couple of years is housing interest, mortgage interest rates, based on Fed rates, have considerably increased. So, if you go to the very next slide, what we've seen happen is, the blue line is the total number of houses sold in Barrow County each month, going back multiple years. And you can see that number has bounced around, but it's been pretty stable, whereas the upper number in orange is the total number of active listings per month. So, housing stock has increased significantly, but sales have been somewhat flat, and we think a combination of that and a few other factors is what has led to us not seeing the growth that we anticipated. What you will notice is, over the last few months, sales have increased. April and May were two of the larger months for sales in Barrow County in a while. So, we will be looking over the summer considerably at what happens with our registration trends, and we'll certainly come back to the board and talk about that, because, again, if we talk about things like we did earlier, managing open positions and personnel, we always have to keep an eye on growth as well, because we're only one summer of getting 600, 700 new kids coming in that we're going to have to revisit our all kinds of plans. So, in this particular instance, we have an eye on that, but that's typically what we think happened this year. So, I will be happy to answer any questions related to enrollment trends as well.
Dr. Thompson, just one. I know it's early, but is there any indication that we might be regaining some of those homeschool students?
It's a little too early to tell. I mean, homeschool, in my experience, homeschooling parents are a little more unpredictable. Like, they, if you're, if you're typically a parent, that's part of the reason housing sales happen so much in the spring, is parents try to plan moves typically around their kids so that they don't have to leave mid-year. A lot of them still do, but homeschool parents, in my experience, can drop in, out any time. They're not quite as tied to year cycles, but we will certainly look at that. And there's a long history, even prior to COVID, and prior to September 4th, of students bouncing back and forth between homeschool and public school.
Thank you.
Well, if there's no other questions, we'll continue these conversations around metrics and data, and try to build up the board's capacity to help with the community on those areas. So, thank you for your attention to that. So, I'm going to move on now to our action items, and I'm going to ask Mr. John St. Clair to come up for the first three.
Thank you. Our district web content filter is the Lightspeed Suite, sold to us by sole source provider, Howard Technology Solutions. We've used our product for several years. This year, we are adding in the Lightspeed Alert with Human Review Module, which bumps the cost over the $75,000 board approval threshold. Howard and Lightspeed have been satisfactory partners for several years, and Howard is not adversely listed in the SAM.gov database. The total financial impact is $81,000 from ITS funds. The superintendent recommends awarding the purchase of Lightspeed Web Filter from sole source Howard Technologies in the amount of $81,000. Our district application portal and rostering system is the ClassLink Suite by sole source provider, ClassLink Incorporated. We have previously been paying year-to-year for this product. However, ClassLink is offering us a discount for a multi-year purchase of 5%, which is roughly worth $8,000 in savings over three years. But the more important piece is that it protects us from any price increases through June of 2028. ClassLink has been a satisfactory software provider for the district for two years. They are not adversely listed in the SAM.gov database. The financial impact is $161,109.66 from ITS funds. The superintendent recommends awarding the purchase of the ClassLink Software Suite from sole source ClassLink Incorporated in the amount of $161,109.66, covering a period of three years. Okay. On January 7th, 2025, the board voted to approve the purchase of network equipment from MXN, based on a mix of federal E-Rate funding and district out-of-pocket expense. Use of this approval was contingent upon the district's final out-of-pocket being within 5% of an estimated $272,000. Our actual out-of-pocket total expense exceeds that amount, so we're bringing this back to you for revision. As a reminder of how E-Rate works, E-Rate allotments to the district are derived from a formula that provides funding based on total student count and percentage of students participating in free-introduced lunch. So, we get $167 per student, based on our funding level, and we are, I'm sorry, $167 per student is our pool, of which we are able to draw 80% of that based on our free-introduced lunch count. And that total is allotted for a five-year period, which is ending in June of this year. For the five-year period ending this year, the district was allotted a potential total of $2.5 million, subject to various project submissions, reviews, and approvals that we do each year. When we brought this request to you last in January, I told you we had $274,000 remaining in our pool, and that we expected to draw it all down if approved by E-Rate. So, the project total was $546,000. E-Rate-funded portion was expected to be $274,000, and our district out-of-pocket was expected to be $272,000. However, I made an error in what I presented to you. I misunderstood that the initial $2.5 million allotment pool and the remaining $274,000 that we had not yet touched were funds that we were able to draw from. However, E-Rate lists those numbers in the pre-discounted amounts, and I had understood, after a discussion with our consultant, that those were our actual total amounts to draw down from. So, the amount that we were able to draw down is actually 80% of the figures. So, we did not have $273,638.51 available to us. We had 80% of that, or a total of $218,910.81. So, the corrected figures for this project are, the project total remains the same, $546,000. The E-Rate-funded portion is $218,610.40, which brings our district out-of-pocket up to $327,446.54. So, it's important to note that this was an error in presentation. We haven't left any significant funding untouched. We're leaving $300 out of our $2.5 million pool on the table, and you can see what our requests have been over the five-year period for what we've requested. So, with the board's approval of this last purchase from the '21 to '25 five-year cycle, we will have drawn down 99.98% of our total allotted funding pool. I regret leaving the 300 on the table, I'll get it next year. So, the financial impact is $327,000, $327,446.54 from district ITS SLOSP funds. That amount is within our budget. The superintendent recommends awarding the purchase of wireless access points and network monitoring tools to low-bid respondent, MXN of Woodstock, Georgia, in a total amount of $546,056.94, with $218,610.40 of that total paid by federal E-Rate funds, the remaining $327,446.54 to be paid out of district SLOSP technology funds. Thank you. I try to make mistakes only once every 10 years, so, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, John. Our last action item of the evening is, Georgia State Law, OCGA 2258, requires that every local Board of Education in the state annually affirm its participation in public board meetings policy by August 1st of each year. That was a new provision that was put in in 2021, so this is about our fourth year of actually doing this. So, you have on the table Policy BCBI and Regulation BCBI R1. State law requires us to, in this policy and regulation, lay out the parameters by which the public may participate in public meetings. It includes specific provisions that we have to include, including the minimum time before a meeting that they must have it in to speak, but also in terms of process for removal, although those things have to be in there by law. So, this is not a policy revision, this is simply the board has to vote to affirm this annually, which means it could be voted on at the July 8th board meeting, should the board wish to do that. So, the superintendent recommends the approval or the affirmation of Policy BCBI and Regulation BCBI R1, and I will answer any questions.
All right.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. All right, we have four items for the consent agenda. Everyone good with that? All right. Now, moving on to executive session to discuss or deliberate upon the appointment, employment, compensation, hiring, disciplinary action, or dismissal, or periodic evaluation, or rating of a public officer, owner, or employee to interview, or to interview applicants for the position of superintendent. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Ms. Calloway. Ms. Brad. Thank you. All right. All right. Your turn.
Everything started going along like it was lively, and I was so happy to see this thing I was working on for the past, like, month, two weeks, day even, start working again. And I was always so happy if I had to pick someone from everyone I've ever met, it has to be Ms. Knowles. Ms. Knowles has been my computer science teacher for the longest time. I've had her through APCSP game design, APCSA, and even now, in work-based learning, I go to her and ask her questions, and she still knows the answers to all of them. Ms. Knowles is a very, very good teacher. She'll always just, like, stand up, walk around, help people with problems. She'll never say something like, "Just look it up on Google." She'll go to it, see the problem, say, "How can we work through this together?" My future plans, right now, for graduation are kind of iffy, I'd say. Right now, I'm, I've been accepted into UGA. I've also been given the honor of getting an internship at Lockheed Martin. My parents want me to go to college, so I will. In the short, the shortened sweet of it, I'm going to college because my parents asked me to, and I love my parents. My biggest dream right now is, if I get out of college, get an internship, get a job, in my free time, start making a video game, which I'm very proud of. I've had this idea in my head for years, for this video game. It's just generally, I need this experience on how to program, how to draw, how to make music, do all these things, how to make a video game in general. What's the process? I'm trying to get as much experience as I can right now, and do work-based learning through people, through talking to other people in general, just learn how to make things, make a video game. I've a lot of small, tiny accomplishments that I'm very proud of, things I can't even remember, but I know happened, that I'm always happy about. But if I had to name something, it'd be what I'm doing right now. Working on the Mono Project, which is a website I started from scratch, when I didn't even know how to make a website, how to know how to make an interactable interface with a website, all this and that, and communicate with an SQL, a database, that actually stores all this information. When I started my work-based learning semester, like, last semester, I had absolutely no clue what I was doing, what I was willing to learn, and I learned from every possible source I could. It's really taught me a lot about cybersecurity, how to build a website, how to maintain a website, what the process is to build and create and maintain all this and that for a simple website. I think the biggest accomplishment right now I've had in high school is the connections I've made along this whole path, through not only engineering software, but through with people too. I know how to communicate better. I know how to build, I know how to engineer, I know what it feels like to be working a part of a team, and I think that's the biggest thing you can learn from anything, how to communicate, how to work, how to work as a team. And I think that's the biggest accomplishment anyone can get. Try your best, always be willing to learn, and most importantly, never give up what you're doing. Always follow that dream, always follow the goal that you have, and never, ever let anyone tell you otherwise. Always follow the dream.
I would describe Kelly and Ben as, as family.
Ben and Kelly, we are so excited to recognize both of you as our February Community Members of the Month. We appreciate everything you pour into our community and our schools, and this is just a small token to say thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen.
Our absolute pleasure.
Truly. I know Ben and Kelly McDaniel through a number of interactions I've had with them over the past five to six years in Barrow County. Ben McDaniel and I were in the same Leadership Barrow class, the class of 2019, and I have gotten to know Kelly through different opportunities through the school system, like the Barrow Leadership Partnership.
Kelly has been kind of the boots-on-the-ground person with our parent education workshops. She's fantastic, of course, with children. She's a children's librarian, and she works with the parents. She's always getting a lot of compliments from, from them.
For me, it's an honor to be recognized with my wife, because even before I was in Family Connection, when I worked back in Parks and Recreation out of college, like, we've both been public servants for a very, very long time, and it's, it's so cool to go back to it again, that the kid that went to Auburn Elementary, Holson Beck Elementary, Bethlehem Elementary, I know I'm missing some, Winderboro Middle School as well, that same kid, to be able to come back 20, 30 years later and just be a contributing member, like, it's the best feeling in the world for me.
Yeah, I feel honored. I mean, it's, we've worked so closely with the school system through my work for years now. I mean, seven, eight years, I've been with my role for eight years, so all eight years we've worked hand-in-hand with Barrow County, and it, yeah, I just feel honored. I feel like we're leaving a legacy of something for our kids to be proud of, and, you know, it is nice to be honored. it is nice to be honored.
All right. Could I have a motion to approve the superintendent's personnel report?
So moved.
Second. You have a motion and a second? All in favor? All right. Have two upcoming board meetings, July 8th regular board meeting, and just one. And, well, we have a Monday public hearing, and that'll be it for a while. All right. Thank you. Good evening.